Bothell City Council is back from break and we're starting into AB 17-078, which is a study session establishing a downtown utilities and frontage improvements reimbursement area, and we have Mr. Feen to kick us off.
Thank you, Mayor and council members, Don Feen, Utility Services Manager, and this is Downtown Utility and Frontage Improvements Reimbursement Area Study Session. So we've met a couple of times before on this council, and we're regrouping now. But I'll rehash what are reimbursement agreements. They are also referred to as recovery contracts or latecomers agreements, and they allow a property owner, in this case, the city, who has installed street or utility improvements to recover a portion of the cost of those improvements from other property owners who later developed the property in the vicinity and used the improvements. And listed here are the state laws that govern it and our new city code, which is Bothell Municipal Code 3.05. The allowable reimbursement amount is to be a prorata share of design, construction, and contract administration costs of the street and/or utility project, and is determined by a method of cost apportionment based on the benefit to the property owner from the property. A city or county may be reimbursed only for the improvement cost that benefit and serve the property. This would include frontage improvements, which is in Bothell Municipal Code 1709, and utility improvements to meet standard requirements. And the cost apportionment scheme for this is outlaid in the 2011 Downtown Revitalization Utility Cost Phasing Cost Partitioning and Financing Study, also known as the Downtown Utility Plan, that details the cost splits and rationale for downtown infrastructure improvements. It was presented to council back in 2011, and it's been utilized ever since for city surplus property purchase and sales agreements since 2012. And necessary public system improvements in the downtown revitalization area have been constructed since that time by developer projects and city capital projects. Some of the projects and developments that have already built some of this infrastructure include the Six Oaks Project. The city's also been reimbursed for downtown capital projects through other surplus property purchase and sales agreements. And the remaining projects constructed by the city that benefit the downtown properties are covered by this proposed reimbursement ordinance. The projects in the proposed ordinance, the staff compiled the information from the projects that have been constructed and are currently under construction, in the case of multiway. We reviewed information from the purchase and sales agreements, developer projects, et cetera. The projects constructed by the city and included in the proposed ordinance are the 98th Avenue Utility and Frontage Improvements and the Multway Boulevard Frontage Project. We hired Grayne Osborne for a cost allocation study, and the projects benefited the adjacent properties by constructing these improvements otherwise required upon development, such as benches, streetlights, utility upsizing, et cetera. So here's the map, and I've annotated some of the properties that are discussed in the AB and elsewhere, and so you can see where some of these projects are. The multway project is from SR 522 to northeast 188th Street. Total project cost was 23 million. We obtained a TIB grant for 5.7 million, utility contributions, including dry utilities, another 1.5 million, other city sources, which include transportation impact fees, property sales, and capital funds, total to 12.2 million. And we're left with a property owner's share of about 3.676 million. PSAs have accumulated 3 million, and we're left with $676,000. That's revised from 1.2 million that we discussed a few months back, and we'll explain This is part of the explanation. The multway Boulevard frontage that we're now recommending the improvements to be paid for are, from the sidewalk basically over, the curve over, I should say, to the properties, would not include the access roads, the side access roads, as we had mentioned before. 98th Avenue Road and Frontage is from SR 522 to northeast 185th Street. And the city installed the asphalt road surface between SR 522 to 183rd. That costs about 319,000. That's not part of this assessment. The city also installed frontage improvements from SR 522 and northeast 185th Street sidewalks, lighting, et cetera. That's 982,000, which is the basis for this proposed assessment. Six Oaks, the city installed roadway improvements between northeast 183rd and 185th, and the Six Oaks Project constructed east side frontage between northeast 183rd and northeast 185th. The developer of Block D will complete the frontage between SR 522 and the new Main Street extension. And here's a picture that shows what would have to be paid for as part of this reimbursement area ordinance. It would not include the Horse Creek Channel, but it'd include all the other sidewalk you see there. And there it is on the other side of the street. And there's the library. We also have a utilities project, water system improvements. We replaced undersized eight-inch diameter main with 12-inch diameter main to meet the new fire flow requirements for the downtown revitalization area. This would typically be a developer cost. The Block D developer will pay for water system improvements as part of their purchase and sales agreement. The Six Oaks developer constructed water system improvements in their area. The proposed developer reimbursement for this part of the project is 121,000. So since we last discussed this at council, we've had two open houses with the affected property owners. They were all invited, and we had pretty good turnouts. And to the issues that we wanted to go back and research at the January open house were the public project costs versus private project costs for doing the same thing. So what was discussed at that meeting was that the feeling that the developers could get projects done cheaper than the city could because of the prevailing wage issues that the city has to deal with in particular. So we had a consultant look at this. They surveyed contractors and analyzed potential differences. We did not get a consensus from their input from the contractors regarding cheaper costs. Essentially, what, under the current economic climate, it's hard to get cheaper labor than the city would get with the prevailing wages. We're not recommending any change here on that one. We also looked, the second issue we looked at was improvements beyond the typical developer requirements. In particular, the access lane was discussed quite a bit. We discussed that internally at staff, and we felt that both the access lanes and the silva cells, which are installed for the street trees, were unusual and outside of what's been the norm in the city. And we revised our multway Boulevard charge, which resulted in a 42.6% reduction. Other topics we discussed at the open house included an argument that smaller-sized developments were impacted disproportionately to development potential. Our response is that the frontage would be required if the properties were to develop in the future. This wouldn't be a topic. It's a frontage requirement, and therefore, the recommended assessment is reasonable. Another comment we had was to clarify the exemption associated with rebuilding a structure after a catastrophe, which is outlined in our municipal code and the new code. And they felt that they may need more than one year. Our response to that is, we could recommend a change to the code to allow up to two years after a catastrophe to provide a complete application to rebuild the structure to the original condition. So we may want some input from the council regarding your feelings on that. Another topic was, if a project submitted for a permit under the current Bothell legislation codes, and before the assessment is passed by council, is it exempt from the assessment? Our response is, the applicant must pay the assessment that's in effect at the time of permit issuance, according to our code. The only exception that we see from that would be that if there's already something's been mitigated pursuant to a voluntary agreement entered into with the city predating the effective date of the reimbursement. Another topic was about the communication from the city regarding the city constructed frontage improvements and the expectation that developers would be responsible for the costs. Our response is, the improvements were planned through the downtown plan and capital facilities plan, which were very public processes. The standard right-of-way sections, including access lanes, sidewalks, et cetera, were all part of the standards for the downtown, and they were in place for several years. And other owners in the area have constructed or contributed to these improvements, such as Six Oaks, McMinimans Junction. And finally, if the city did not construct the improvements with public funds, this would be a frontage requirement, and the developer would be required to construct them. Another topic, the city should utilize a different methodology other than linear foot of frontage. An alternative would be a system based on the usage of the site instead of the perlineal foot of frontage method. Our response is, the perlineal foot method is the most appropriate because it's consistent with the BMC and our policy and how we've determined these frontage improvements and had them constructed in the past. Property owners developing the property would be responsible to construct this frontage consistent with our design standards, and neither the square footage of the property nor the development potential would dictate those improvements. Lastly, the other methods would be much more complicated to administer and likely to generate even more complaints. Another topic, concerns that the downtown reimbursement area ordinance could be extended longer than 15 years. In reality, there's very narrow parameters under which that could take place. It's governed by an RCW that currently states that the contract may provide an extension of the 15-year reimbursement period for a time not to exceed the duration of any moratorium, phasing ordinance, concurrency designation, or other governmental action that prevents making applications for or the approval of new developments within the benefit area for a period of six months or more. Another topic, were the impact of the assessment on property value. Our response is, it's not due at the property sale. It's only due if the property is developed within 15 years. Interior improvements and exterior structure maintenance activities are exempt from this. The assessment represents the cost of improvements that would be required, once again, if the properties were developed. These would be development requirements. Lastly, the assessment may actually act as an incentive to purchase and develop these properties. Typical frontage improvements will already have been constructed for them and at 2016 prices prior to their development. So even if it developed in the year 2025, for instance, they're paying 2016 prices. So a summary of the key issues. The downtown utilities and frontage improvements reimbursement area is a mechanism for developers to pay their share of the improvements. The multway frontage improvements included two items which staff felt were atypical, and they were removed from the assessments. All other improvements would be required of the developer for these sites, consistent with our city policy. We don't feel there's enough evidence to support that private contract costs are significantly different than public prevailing wage costs. The city's large project also, we believe, has an economy of scale benefit. We constructed a large project. Each one of these private owners would have to do small frontage improvements, and the economy of scale would generally give you lower price per lineal foot if you have a bigger project. The charges are also construction costs in 2016 dollars, which are cheaper than the cost that would be incurred for development, paid in future dollars at the time of development, which could be up to 15 years in the future. We feel that at some point in the future, the assessment for the improvement may act as an incentive for developers to purchase and develop these properties. They're ready to go. The frontages are constructed, and, once again, they can pay for it at the 2016 dollars, or they will. So with that, I'll leave it open to questions. And currently, this item's scheduled to return to council for consideration of a resolution establishing the downtown utilities and frontage improvements assessment reimbursement area on June 6th.
So just to clarify, actually, this is probably a city attorney question. June 6th would be when we would initiate a public hearing? It's not when we would just adopt these?
No. So, I'm sorry, to initiate the public hearing, yes. Essentially, you would adopt a resolution indicating your intent to proceed with an ordinance, which is what this would be, at a later date of your choosing, presumably sometime in July because of the August break. At that point, once you have indicated you're going to take final action on this, official notice of whatever date you choose for that final action would be sent out to everyone. If anyone objects to it, and objects so in writing, then we would schedule the public hearing. We anticipate there's going to be objections, and so if you pass the resolution on June 6th to set this for a public hearing, we would then notice a public hearing for that date.
Since I started the questions, I'll keep going. So the changes that we've made, has that dampened the concerns that were raised in the public meetings? Are they still just as upset as they were?
I think there's still concerns. I still think that people want to be heard. We have tried our best to let them know that this is not an invoice. Like, if this final action takes place in an ordinance that we establish, or that council establishes as downtown reimbursement area, it's not a bill that is due. So it is something that is attached to the property if the property is developed, either by the current owner or a subsequent owner who wants to develop. So if I own a piece of property, there's an assessment reimbursement attached to it, and I sell to a sibling, a family member, a friend, a stranger, who wants to use it and keep it as-is, this never triggers. So it's not a bill that comes due for the current owner. It's only if the property is developed.
Okay. And so is that the exhaustive list, or those are the highest concerns that were raised in this community group meetings?
We tried to capture all of the concerns that we heard between the January meeting and the March meeting, so I would say that it's a fairly exhaustive list.
I'd say it's pretty exhaustive. We had internal meetings afterwards, and we said, what are all the topics you took down? I believe it's, I would use the word exhaustive.
And then just real quick, so the frontage improvements, typically, it seems like the frontage improvement usually goes into the pavement all the way to the center line of the road. On the multway Boulevard, we wouldn't do that, but I'm just curious, so is it because of the type of the cobbles or whatever those things are? Is that why we're taking that part out? Because it seems like you would at least do one lane of asphalt with any, with the other redevelopments that we've seen, they usually go to the center line of the road if it's a two-lane road.
So the paver roadway is more expensive than an asphalt roadway. So that's why, after hearing the concerns from the property owners, we discussed it with staff and felt that both the paver roadway, the access lane, as well as the silva cells, were above and beyond what a typical half-street improvement would be. Both the multway Boulevard, as well as the 98th Avenue, improvements are of a higher finish, and we have more appurtenances there, nicer streetlights and those types of things. So it's already an upgraded roadway and sidewalk. So it's staff's recommendations to take those two items off.
And then my last question is, I have some concern about the fairness, if you will, because Main Street is obviously not on the list of places that we were going to charge this, not charge, but apply the assessment. From a legal standpoint, is that okay? I mean, is it okay to not do it in one place and do it in another place?
It is. I've discussed this with Scott Masol, and it's purely at the discretion of the councils to where they establish that area. And so we're allowed to delineate different neighborhoods, different areas.
Okay. Those are my questions. Is there anybody else that wants to go? Deputy Mayor?
I'm not ready, but I'll go. Regarding Main Street, we have grants for that, so I guess I'm confused about your question. Because if it's not, if it was paid for by grants, then it's a different scenario. Am I right or am I wrong in that?
So there are city funds in Main Street as well as the grants. We do have a match, and I can't, I'm looking to Steve Morikawa to figure out, to let me know if he remembers how much it was.
It was the 400 from the REIT that we talked about just earlier, and I thought it was about another four. That was in the 800, you know?
Yeah, it's probably a little bit more because we also had design, but we also had a federal grant for design as well. So it is a percentage. It's fairly small compared to the cost of the whole project.
Okay. Well, and I think, in my mind, Main Street's different. It is, it's different. And I think the idea was, in doing the downtown development, we wanted to make sure that we didn't lose Main Street to the new development. And so, to me, that makes sense. So I'll just put that out there. Need to look at my notes now. So I guess I have some concerns that, I appreciate the staff's adjustment for the multway Boulevard. That makes a lot of sense to me. And I completely appreciate that regardless, if the city hadn't done these improvements, these developments would be paying for it anyway. But I do wonder about people who maybe were caught. I don't know if there's a population of people that were kind of caught in having plans and not knowing that they would be needing to pay for these. Do you know if there is that scenario where, I mean, has it always been published that this is what we were going to do? This was the intent, and so it shouldn't surprise anyone? Or?
Well, there's always frontage requirements for any development in Bothell, so that's...
So anyone who knew what they're doing and planning on developing would anticipate these costs?
They would anticipate, they should anticipate frontage costs. And I guess the only question that they may bring up is the extent. You know, this is kind of Cadillac frontage, but then again, it's in the downtown, which is, that is kind of typical of the downtown. You're going to have a more, a wider sidewalk. You're going to have, you know, streetlights that are a certain way and this and that. So in a way, it shouldn't have caught them, in our opinion.
So regarding the difference between the multway and 98th, it sounds like we removed some things that the multway developers would have to pay. So now that we've done that, is it apples to apples, they're paying for the same thing?
Actually, the cost per lineal foot is almost the same now, on the two.
So in other words, that we didn't take away the lights on multway and leave them on 98th?
No. They both have to...
So the linear cost is about the same?
It's almost the same. On the new assessment, I believe, they're both in the $900 per lineal foot range, I believe.
Are you looking it up? You can look it up, because I need to find my questions, my other questions, anyway.
One point that, I don't know if we skipped a slide, but there was one comment made or one question about, on the 98th, on the west side of 98th, there is a portion of sidewalk that's separated from the properties by the channel. So for a few of those properties, so the question was, is what if those developers are required, for whatever reason, to build additional frontage? And there is, I think, a 42-inch concrete cap between the channel and the property. And one thing that council, with council's direction, staff could include language in the ordinance and the resolution to say, if the city requires additional frontage improvements along that section, that we could credit them the amount of those improvements against their charge. So something for council to consider.
Yeah, so that was, on the Horse Creek Channel, the 98th section, the widest part of the sidewalks on the east side of the channel. And then the wests, the west side has a very narrow sidewalk, and that got brought up as an issue. And our idea that with the staff consensus was, if they were required in the development process to do additional frontage, that we should credit them somehow on that. So I'm not sure what happened to that slide.
It's in your...
Okay. Well, I mean, I would be in favor of that. Generally, I'm happy that we had, we kind of paused and took everyone's comments and tried to address them and did studies. I really appreciate staff taking the time to do that. And I don't know, I guess for me, the changes make sense, and it seems fair. So that's all my comments.
And the answer, it's actually $922 a lineal foot for the multway and $918 for the 98th, almost the same. That's after taking out the access road and the silva cells.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Who would like to go next? No comments? Catherine, yeah?
Thank you. So I had a question on the type of construction. So if you had a 16-unit building versus a 32-unit building, you would pay the same, if you had the same lineal footage, frontage, you'd pay the same price, correct? So in that scenario, the private developer, if the city didn't do it, would have had to pay, would have had to do those improvements the same anyway?
Right. It's along the frontage, and just to think about it, I mean, how would you, would you have them construct more than their frontage? And then, it would be really convoluted to even do it any other way. And it's, this is typical of any city, and the way they, almost every city, and the way they do this, because there isn't really a better way. I mean, you can, there's probably pros and cons in maybe doing it another way, but the negatives probably outweigh the positives, because it would be hard to get all the frontage done in the right way. So it's just the mechanism. And frontage is valuable, anyway, for the property. The more frontage they have, the more valuable the property. So if they have more frontage... So if they have more frontage, they're going to pay more, but that's, I mean.
So it sounds like, it sounds like the lineal footage price is not tied to a development in any way. It's just tied to the improvement that's done on the roadway, correct? So you just, I think you stated a price of $922 and $918 per foot?
Yes.
And then you had, I think there was a slide that showed a 42%, 42.6% reduction?
That got you down to the $922 figure.
So what was it prior to that?
I believe, I was, I think it was around $1,300, no. No, it was more than that. I think it was 15, I believe it was 1,500, 1,500.
And in that price calculation at the higher rate, did we take into consideration the, you had mentioned the prevailing wage versus individual private construction. Was that taken not into consideration at that point, or was it taken into consideration at the $922 rate?
So those figures are, those are the public costs because that's our project. So those are prevailing wage. So the issue we wrestled with was, is that a legitimate concern? Do we think that there's reason to reduce it because they could have done it cheaper? And there's three things kind of came out of that and through, working through it. And that's one, well, during the current economic climate, there isn't really that much of a cost savings because it's so hard to get labor, to get cheaper labor than we are forced to get. Now, during a slower economic climate, there might be some more validity to that. The other, the other issue that we, it's part of it, part of the whole project, is we built a big project and you have an economy of scale benefit with that. So that probably outweighs it right there and any benefit you do have on.
Yeah, I understand when you piece project by project, there's, it's a higher cost value to it. I mean, if you're building 100 homes versus one home, there's definitely a savings there. The section, the paver section that was removed, that got that savings, how does that get paid for?
That would be city funds, city general funds paying for it. We've already, they've already, it's already been paid, so we wouldn't get paid back, basically. The city wouldn't.
So essentially, the citizens are paying for that?
Yes.
Community? Okay. I think you were mentioning the channels, that Horse Creek Channel and the sidewalk that's on the east side?
Yes, the side, so the wider part of the sidewalks on the east side near the street for a few of the parcels on the, on the west side of the street. So along the library property, for instance, is one of them that's affected by that.
And does that go all the way to 522? Or does it stop at the library?
So there's, as far as the chan, how the side.
As far as the wider sidewalk on the east side?
As the channel, when the channel's open, it's like that. So the open sections is where you have that, you know, that issue.
So south of the library, there's the parcel that's between where the Main Street extension will be and 522. The sidewalk is actually on the west side of the channel in that section.
Okay, so, so if you start at 522, the sidewalk is, you start at 522 to the library, it's on the west side?
Yes.
And then when you get to the library, it moves back over to the east side?
Yes.
Okay. Let's see. And then as far as the, there was a comment about anticipation of frontage, I'm trying to remember exactly how it was stated, but anticipating improvements or frontage improvements. I guess I would look at it and I'd ask the question, most of us would look at it, is if we go buy a house and we want to improve something, or the city's going to improve something, or we want to improve something, that's a cost that, there's a cost associated with doing that improvement. And I guess for somebody who owns land in the downtown area, I guess I would look at it as, is there a benefit to this improvement economically for them? Besides property value, would there be a benefit to this being done for them as an economic driver, having something done in front of their property? Do we ever look at it that way or no?
In staff's opinion, yes. The entire revitalization of the downtown, it's a much different place and I would, I would anticipate that the property values downtown in the last four to five years have increased significantly, in part due to the improvements that have been, that have been done by the city and by private developers as well. So to not only not have to incur that cost, but to have that, to be on a walking corridor and to be in the revitalized downtown, it's an improvement and staff, my sense of it is that it is an improvement to their property value to have those improvements there.
And is there any, is there any other areas of potential savings that you could see that maybe passed along for that work? Or are we where we should be? Because to me, the 42.6 means that 42.6 is going on in community. Is that correct?
Right, correct. Yeah.
Regardless of, regardless of what fund it comes out of, that means the taxpayers of this city are paying for that, correct?
Have already paid for that, correct. And remember again, that unless these properties redevelop within the 15-year period, reimbursement won't be received by the city. So it's only those properties and those costs that are assessed against the properties as well as that development opportunity. So I, we've been through this with what I believe is a fine-tooth comb and feel that it is, it is a fair assessment on those property owners since they are, the improvements are consistent with our development standards. We've been, as a city, we've been talking about this for a long period of time through the downtown revitalization and what the community wanted to see as far as improvements. And then coming back to the council with that downtown partitioning plan, the conversation that there, there is a benefit to those developers, those property owners, and they should be a part of the picture for paying for those. And we, we had the opportunity with quite a few purchase and sale agreements along, particularly the Multway Boulevard, that we, we included that in there so that we could be certain that we would recoup that. And for example, Six Oaks, they paid for the access lane as well as the silver cells and the sidewalk and all the appurtenances. So, so we have recouped the funding for a lot of the other frontage, particularly along the Multway Boulevard. So it doesn't seem too far a reach to request that or require that of the other development happening downtown.
Okay. And you're going to, would you be including, when you bring it back to us, the option, will we see any option for the ones along the channel there that you had mentioned earlier of having a potential credit? Will we see that when you guys bring that back?
That's council's direction.
Okay, so we'd have to direct you to do that?
I see two nods so far, three nods.
Okay, yeah, okay. All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councilor Agnew?
Well, I think most of my questions have been answered, and I think the city has gone over this with a fine-tooth comb, and I think we are being as fair as we can possibly fair be, excuse me. And I'm in support of staff's recommendations.
Councilor Sammer?
Yeah, I appreciate the work that staff has done on this. Even without the, sort of the reduction in cost that you're proposing this time around, didn't the partitioning study, I think you're talking about this, but the partitioning study had the utility rate payers, where the rate payers are actually paying 60% of the improvements already, right?
For the, for the, you're talking about Horse Creek in particular, or you're talking about all water main and?
Well, Horse Creek or any of the associated utility projects down there.
So.
Or down here.
Yeah, on the Horse Creek project, so the, we established a facility charge for that Horse Creek project itself, and that was the cost of the project divided by the whole area. That's the most you can charge. We didn't go quite up to that amount. The council stopped a little short. But even if you do go to the top, that you're, if you look at a 20-year horizon, which is typical for finance, you know, if half of it develops, you can figure that half of the people, half of the cost would have been paid for by the developers and half by the rate payers. So that was kind of our ballpark estimate of how that would play out. And the water main and sewer main replacement was a combination that was spread out on that partitioning study. There were some areas where the main was just very old and it was poor material, like a AC pipe. So those replacement costs in those cases, if it was the same size, we said it was the rate payers. That was something that was going to have to be replaced anyway. But if it was, you had to upsize the pipe for fire flow and things like that, we said that would be a developer cost and we started each side of the street. If the, if it was going up 98th, for instance, or 96th, each side of 96th, for instance, would have to pay 50%. So that's kind of, that was the way we, the logic that was used in the downtown utility plan.
Okay, well, I support the direction and I support exploring a rebate for the sidewalk improvement sections that you noted in the agenda packet.
Everybody else is good? So, oh, there we go. Councilor Freed?
I missed the presentation, but the kids did really great. I missed the saxophone, but the singing icon, it was a lot of fun. Thank you for letting me go. And thank you for your patience as you answer questions that you've already talked about. Just south of P-South, there's those four little blocks, which, as I've seen renderings in the past, which were all just concept by toll, all those units were going to take access to the east. So why wouldn't they be included in some type of latecomer agreement?
Because they're not fronting, they're not fronting 98th, and they are building, they are doing their own, they are doing improvements themselves as well, so.
But.
As part of the PSA, right?
So by nature, all right, I guess by natural, nature that they're not one tax parcel, they're multiple tax parcels, those tax parcels kind of escape.
You're talking about, so west, are you talking about west of P-South and south of P-North?
Not necessarily the block west of P-South, that's very large, because naturally, they're going to do all the frontage to the west on their site.
Right, okay.
But as I've seen, those four little blocks to the west, my eyes are bad, is that a seven and an eight?
Oh, those ones, okay, those, near the shag? I'm not sure which.
No, between the library and between P-South. There's four little blocks that aren't highlighted that I've seen flowing to the east. Those don't have to pay any latecomer's agreement for any units that they put on there.
They do. They're labeled there.
No, I only see two of them that are labeled. I wish we had a laser pointer.
I'm not sure, maybe I'm mistaken.
Did you guys see what I'm talking about?
Yeah, those don't front.
So you have the library? Yeah. Yeah, those, only that, right there, I think you dealt.
Well, they don't front, they don't front 98th.
Yeah, but their traffic has to go somewhere and naturally, they're going to go to the east, so I don't know why they wouldn't have a latecomer burden put on them.
They're not required, that's the way frontage works. And once, and you can see in a way that, once again, those properties aren't going to be as valuable to begin with. And it's just not a frontage requirement for those properties. They're going to have to do other things as far as utilities and things like that there.
What about shag? They have no latecomer agreement?
Shag had a, and the purchase and sales agreement, not, excuse me, not purchase and sales agreement, they are doing frontage improvements, I'm sorry.
Oh, so they will be required, we're just not doing work there with.
They're doing, they're actually building the access road and sidewalks and all that, so on their, on their side.
Yeah, because that was a private transaction, same way to shag, directly. Okay. Cool, thank you very much.
All right. So you guys have what you need? Okay. I believe it's, do we have anything else on the agenda? I don't recall. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moved by Councilor Agnew, second by Deputy Mayor. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Past unanimously, or adjourned?